Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 30th, 2023 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be September 27th, 2023 at 6:30 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Patrick, if you could please read in the preamble.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will proceed with the petition in the order they are listed on the agenda unless the board deems it appropriate to take petition out of order. State law and local ordinances set out the criteria that must be met in order for this board to grant a request. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the community development office, and the petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the board to grant the request. The chair will open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against. All discussion will be between the speaker and the board. Please be respectful of all, and in the interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the board for consideration this evening, but the board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After hearing the facts from all the parties regarding the petition, the chairman will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the request before moving on to the next petition. Please turn off all cell phones. And with those who plan to speak and testify this evening, please stand to be sworn in.
And that includes anybody that's looking to give any type of testimony tonight?
Do any talking tonight?
If you could all please raise your right hand. You swear tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Alright, thank you so much. We will move on with the first petition. Actually, before we do that, we do have a full board tonight, which is always good to see. And first petition will be Armada Realty LLC petitioner owner, special exception under section 2.02.2C1 of the zoning ordinance to permit a restaurant with a drive-through in the C1 limited commercial district. Parcels are located at 632 and 634 Daniel Webster Highway, and the C1 limited commercial aquifer conservation elderly housing overlay districts and the wellhead protection area. Tax map 6E-2, lot 6 and 7, case ZBA 2023-25. Absolutely.
Good evening, Matt Peterson with Keach Northam Associates here representing the special exception at 632 and 634 Daniel Webster Highway in Merrimack, New Hampshire. With me tonight is the owner of Hot Rise William, who's been in town for approximately 20 years now running the Hot Rise Restaurant. As I just stated, he's been in town for approximately 20 years running this business at the existing location. I think most of us probably in town know where Hot Rise is. I think it's a pretty well-established business that's been around for quite a bit. It is across the street from the doggy daycare, kind of diagonally from the homestead restaurant. Obviously, down the street is the new residential apartments that were just built by Flatley. We have the church to our north. We have a residential use next to us in the middle here. And then we have the residence along, actually, I forget the name of the street right here. But there's two residents in the back and there's one daycare in the front. Again, we've got some hodgepodge of kind of office in this area, and then we come across to some more residential and residential in the back. What we'd like to do on this parcel is my client in 2022 purchased the residential house that kind of sits in the kind of whole pod that you see here, which kind of was a commercial development with the office building in the back and then my client's building in the front. So he purchased the home in 2022. He would like to consolidate the two lots and then reconvene with a new Hot Rise Restaurant on site. As we all know, things have kind of changed the last four years with the whole world. Some of the things he's running into, which is kind of interesting from a cost standpoint is he wants to get some more space for freezer storage and product storage. It kind of goes up and down being able to find the products, and if he has some more space on site, he would be able to accommodate that. The second thing, as you know, his office, his business hours are six to three right now. So this is more of a, you know, morning type thing, like a Dunkin' Donuts you would see somewhere in this location along the strip, obviously going towards the highway. So to come forward and look to do another restaurant with a drive-through and relocate Hot Rise to that site is what he's coming, obviously, to you guys first. The goal would be obviously that we got to planning board after this. But this use, restaurant and cafes are only allowed in the C1 commercial district by a special exception from this board. So not a variance. We do recognize that they make sense in this area in town, in that district. They just want to make sure that where they are proposed, that they do fit in with the neighborhood and the area that you're proposing it on. Again, a lot of mixed use in this area. I'm not going to tell you, we don't have residents near you. That's what happens in a development when you put it commercial one at the time with the regs there. It slowly develops into that commercial one. It doesn't start day one, so this is a step in that direction with this piece that's there. We put together a preliminary plan. This has not been engineered to date yet, obviously, because a special exception, as I said, is required first. But we're looking to propose a second building, similar in size to the first one, not two stories, but a 5,000 square foot, which would allow a lot of storage for his use. It also would be more conducive to the customers. I drove by there yesterday mid-morning, I think about nine. There's a lot of people that park in front, and as he's finding, a lot of people are running in and running out now. Not as many people staying as they had in the past and stuff like that. So it seems to make sense for a drive-through at this location. It seems to make sense for this existing facility to have a drive-through. It seems to make sense for this product and what he's doing to have a drive-through at this location. I do know, speaking with some of the butters, there would be things at a site plan level that we'd have to work through and kind of look at from screening standpoint and traffic circulation and that. But tonight, it's really to allow the use in this district on this parcel. The interesting is when we merge the parcels, the restaurant will already be on it. So special exception is kind of weird to ask for because they're already there. But it's kind of what we have to do, and it's a process, because it is a new building. Don't get me wrong, we're doing something new with it, but his actual restaurant is the one that would take the space that's there. He's preliminary, just so you guys know, we talked to Stevens Marquis down the street. They've started to put together some preliminary layouts for a restaurant. This is what he's starting with at this point. They're going through now, starting to run some numbers and stuff like that, and they're coming back substantially high. Again, this is just a quick internal layout that he's put together preliminary, not finalized yet. But again, gives his employees a lot more space to work. Also lays out a nice restaurant area for him with the rest of the units that are there. With that said, the criteria, as I said, is not a variance criteria, so it's a special exception criteria. The first one is a specific site is an appropriate location of the use, location for such a use or uses in terms of overall community development because I would offer the project proposal includes a consolidation to a budding parcels of different uses. To date, lot 6 is residential. However, nobody's been in it for about a year and a half or so, a year, year and a half when they passed away. However, the surrounding areas become largely commercial in nature with a budding uses such as restaurants, salons, chiropractor, doggy daycare, offices, and childcare. Some of these uses which currently exist on lot 7. The restaurant café Hot Rise is currently a tenant of the mixed-use commercial building on lot 7, and the intended user of the post standalone restaurant building with the drive-through. Hot Rise is a well-established and popular restaurant at this location. The applicant believes that using this property in this manner is a better use for the area than a residential property. Therefore, the property is an appropriate location for the proposed use and accessory use. Mr. Chairman, would you like me to go through all four or one at a time?
Does anyone on the board have any questions? I think that given that this is a this is not a variance but a special exception, I'd say just go through it all.
Okay. The use as a developer not adversely affect the neighborhood because the proposed restaurant use and accessory use is consistent with and/or complements the existing uses of both the mixed-use commercial development on site and the surrounding uses which include but are not limited to restaurants, salon, chiropractor, office, doggy care, and et cetera. This area has become largely commercial in nature. A commercial location is more desirable, therefore eliminating the residential use appropriate for the neighborhood. The proposed residential buildings are intended to be utilized by Hot Rise, which is an established and popular restaurant at this location. Therefore, the use as developed is not expected adversely impact the neighborhood. Again, we're looking to just redevelop in a use that has established itself in the neighborhood over 20 years. That's kind of growth, and that's what I think most towns would hope that businesses come in and they're successful.
So essentially, we're just moving Hot Rise to a new location that's larger?
Yep.
Actually, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yeah, of course.
So you'd made a comment, and maybe it should be safe really, but I'll test it now. You made a comment that it makes sense to do a drive-through because you're seeing less and less foot traffic. There are less people eating in the restaurant.
Yes, less people.
You're proposing a building that's almost the same size of the existing building.
Again, for most of that's for storage, is what he's trying to get in, working for the internal that's there. So as he's gone through with his sales, and he was just talking about it, he doesn't see, he's kind of maxed out the growth in the area. I mean, you're going to get so many people that come in there as you go. So yes, there should be some growth, but it's not doubling. And as you're saying, it's more so to have space for him to have freezers. I personally think the building is going to go down as we go to site plan a little bit, and he's going to do outside storage freezers instead of inside the building because of a cost standpoint. But that's what Dennis Stevens is running some of the numbers right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because the lots have a total of three existing curb cuts along Daniel Webster Highway. The project proposes to eliminate one of these curb cuts for safer access and egress. Site circulation, most specifically regarding the drive-through, will be clearly marked with signage, arrows, and other pavement markings as appropriate. The drive-through is ample space. You know, we've done lots of, well, you guys have seen lots of Dunkin' Donuts or coffee shops that don't have the amount of room that we have around the back of this building to ensure nobody spills on a DW highway on this one here. The drive-through is ample parking, stacking for vehicles on site to ensure no backup on the Diva Highway. A walk with handicap accessibility is proposed, is being proposed along the entire length of the front of the proposed restaurant for pedestrian safety. These measures were implemented with vehicle and pedestrian safety in mind. Therefore, no nuisance or serious hazard of vehicles or pedestrians are anticipated. The fourth one is adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of those uses because the applicant will be required to obtain site plan approval from the town of Merrimack Planning Board. Therefore, the site will be designed in accordance with the town regulations, general good engineering practice. Both site design would include all necessary provisions required for the proper operation of restaurants such as, but not limited to, parking, access circulation, utility connections, water, sewer, gas, landscape lighting, and stormwater managements. With that ended in conclusion, the applicant believes that a special exception for location would be an appropriate one based on what he's done the last 20 years that are there. I would open up for questions and comments from the board and butters at this point.
Mr. Chair, any questions? So back where it says the number three, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard, vehicles, pedestrians. As it states right now, that the parking lot's tight. I mean, I've been to Hot Rise, and getting around the building is even tight, especially coming around the corner that is on the church side. And so I guess you said you're eliminating a curb cut. It looks like you have a, it looks like you have something coming out. It looks, and I'm assuming that that lane would only turn right and not left.
Yes, correct.
But the people coming out going left, they're going to, it just seems like you're going to have a bottleneck of traffic at the same entrance that you have right now. And maybe even more so now that you're putting in a whole drive-through lane for people that want to come out and go right, or no, go left.
Yes, sir. So one of the things we talked about with staff was cleaning up. If you've been to that, it's a wide-open 50-foot with no lanes and stuff like that. As we would get to the site plan, we would clean up that from an in-and-out standpoint, as well as we got the circulation, as you'll see, around the extra restaurant with parking that's cleanly marked in front here. It opens up this whole area in here so that people have plenty of room. And again, this now takes away, you know, his use right in front here with the parking that's there. So we do believe that cleaning up this and adding the extra area and the extra parking in front allows much more of a circulation through the site. Again, most of this traffic is going to come out, honestly, come out of the residential units across the street. Going to come down the road, come into the site, go through the drive-through, take the left and go out. So the goal was to eliminate them coming in and out of this area as much as possible, because you're right. You know, that's where the conflicts happen today. We're going to be able to take, don't have an exact number, but at least 50% of the trips would come out and continue to the, to the road and out.
So, and forgive me for asking, the owner of the other building where your current restaurant is, is that?
He owns both.
That is, okay. So, okay, so then rerouting the traffic is something that you can?
He has control over all that.
Okay, you have control, but that's was my next question. Thank you.
Matt? We currently have a special exception for the existing Hot Rise?
That's, I'm not sure. I kind of thought that today, and I'm not 100% sure.
I thought you said that, so I'm asking.
No, I'm just saying it's existing on site now. I'm not sure when your C1 zoning got added.
Yeah, I didn't research that, but honestly, this would clean it up by default.
Okay. Second, mixed use, does mixed use require residential?
To be a mixed-use development, I would think that'd be, yeah, some sort of residential component.
And we're eliminating the residential component on this, correct?
There was never a residential component yet. These are still two separate lots.
I understand, but?
If we added it, it would, yeah, if we added it, then it would have a residential component.
If you're doing a mixed-use development and you're taking the one?
Why is this considered a mixed use? It's all commercial.
I keep hearing you say mixed use.
Multiple tenants.
Multiple tenants, I'll buy, but you keep saying mixed use.
I'm sorry. It's multiple, it's multiple commercial. We have, it's a chiropractor, salon, and office.
Okay, no, I understand, I'm just.
Yeah, no, no, we're not doing mix, I'm sorry, no, that, yeah.
And I see one curb cut. Where's the other curb cut?
So we are proposing to keep the existing curb cut, and again, clean it up, as I explained to Patrick during site plan, and then we have a second right churn out only.
Yeah, that one I understand, I'm looking for the northern one.
So this one currently has two coming into it existing. So the house right now
Yep.
has the double kind of loop on it. Same thing with the buddy, so we'd get rid of that double right there.
And you've got enough of a space for drive-around?
Yes.
In addition to the?
Yes, we did lane here, and I have 24 feet on the, I have 24 feet on the backside too.
So we've got fire department's going to be okay with this?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. Okay, thanks, Matt. Matt, I'm good.
What's that?
I'm good.
Okay, I just wanted to see what it was. But now that we did two lanes on both sides, so the bypass it there and everything like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it looks sufficient. Any other questions from the board? Chuck?
Your existing restaurant, how many diners does it seat?
Probably like 38 right now.
I didn't hear you.
38?
Approximately 38.
38 seats that we have right now. Probably double. But most of the time will stay empty, because that's the way the business is, except probably for Saturday and Sunday.
And just so you know, so it's 60?
If you ever go to Hot Rise in the morning, you see all the empty seats. So people just come in and then they, they just pack at the ordering area and then just wait there. You know, so it, it takes a lot of parking spots for, from all the tenants. And then everybody is cramped at the, at the, the front ordering area. So have, most of the restaurants, the space is empty.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
I mean, a lot of restaurants, we look at 100 to 120 typical, if we would do something this size. So, you know, again, he's not trying to blow up the world. We thought he's trying to get himself a little bit, but go for it.
Mostly what I want to do is like to ease the people coming in and going.
Oh, absolutely.
So that don't stay like everybody, spend like 15 minutes waiting, you know? And I think the future is like, before they come in, they're just already on their phone. They just come in and have like a drive-through window to pick up their stuff.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a huge benefit to be able to do that, because then you're not occupying all the parking spots for all the other tenants.
Yes.
Any other question, Chuck?
I'd like to address the historic nature of the site in that the original high school in Merrimack was located at 10 Depot Street, and it was torn down in 1949. In 1951, they decided to move the number three schoolhouse, which was an elementary grade schoolhouse, from its location and put it down on the site of the original high school at 10 Depot Street. And so they moved the building. So the little white cape that Mr. Hang has purchased and is talking about making his new Hot Rise on that site. That is the original site of the number three school in Reed's Ferry, in the Reed's Ferry District of Merrimack. Now, the number three school still exists. It's now located at 10 Depot Street, and it's the home of the Merrimack Historical Society. And we have, as over the last couple of years, become a revitalized organization. And we're doing a lot of new things in the community to promote our history and to help elevate some of the cultural understanding of who we once were, that we might decide better who we want to be. This is an excellent opportunity. We're projecting into the future with a business that is now historic in Merrimack after 20 years. And I would be very happy as the vice president of the Historical Society to create a photo document of the original building that could be placed inside his facility that would help tell his customers what took place there before they walked in the door and that they might have a better understanding of what a community-based business his really is. So I'd like to offer that just to Mr. Hang.
We will definitely make appointment with you. It moves forward.
Excellent. Any other?
And please come and visit us at 10 Depot Street.
All right. So at this point, all I'll go ahead and do is open this to the, to the publics. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this particular petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this particular petition? Are you looking to speak against the petition?
Well, no, against it, I just have a lot of concerns.
Oh, sure, if you could just come to the microphone and just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jim Drapow, and I am the owner of the property right next to where this proposed restaurant is going to go. My biggest concern is the drive-through that'll be dumping out right in front of my driveway of my residence. So that's my biggest concern at this point. You know, there's other concerns, and, you know, I talked to William a little bit earlier. So at some point, you know, that's going to be addressed. But the main concern right now is that, and I think that's a design issue. I don't, I don't see it changing very much because it's tight as it is. So, you know, I want to say that's my biggest concern. And then there's some other things too, the noise issue. You know, now I could, I mean, he's got, he's got dumpsters he's going to be putting on the site. You know, I want locations for that. You know, certain minor things, but you know, they're going to, they're all going to add up to something, so. I don't know if that's something we talk about here now, or?
So, sure, go ahead.
Those are all going to be part of the
That's, that's what?
Site plan review that's going into the planning board, so keep an eye out. You're in a butter, you'll get notified when it's coming to planning board. You can come and address some of those issues because they're very appropriate. And they should be addressed, and just come to planning board, that's, that's where it goes.
Yeah, I mean, my biggest concern is with a drive, drive-through.
Planning board.
Ends, yeah, planning board, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone looking to speak either for or against this particular petition? Okay.
My name is Susan Prue. I live in the development across the way from the proposed restaurant. When I first heard about this, I was thrilled for Hot Rise because I love that restaurant. I love Sophie, who runs the restaurant. But my second thought was, has anybody or will anybody do a study of the extra traffic that having a restaurant opposite Hilton Drive, whether it's a drive-through, whether it's a drive-through and a cafe, restaurant, cafe, drive-through, whatever, that's going to cause more traffic? And we've already been suffering with so much traffic. We cannot get out of our neighborhood at certain times of the day to get from Hilton Drive onto the highway. So I can't believe I'm speaking tonight, but I'm very concerned about that.
If you don't mind me asking, when, what times of the day are you observing this traffic?
Well, it used to be during the morning commute from whatever, depending on the season, 7:30 to 10 or 9:30. Then, of course, you all know, from 3 o'clock on, that road is jam-packed. If you're on that road trying to get in front of his new restaurant into Hilton Drive, you are backed up often for 20 minutes, depending on how much traffic there is. Nobody seems to be able to solve the problem as it is now, never mind adding.
Oh, I would absolutely agree with you. The, I think the one saving, what I've noticed personally, because I live in that area as well.
Do you?
I, as I see the traffic that happens, it seems like 3:30 to 4 o'clock is when it starts. And it just, it's miserable for sometimes two to three hours. I think the saving grace in this particular case is where his establishment is an open pass 3:00 PM. It's not going to interfere with that traffic, and that traffic is typically northbound. His, his exit is southbound. I don't, I personally have not experienced that level of traffic in the morning. So that's why I was asking if there's any morning traffic that you've observed. But it's, I think it's a valid point. At the same time, that's, you want to address that one?
Again, that's a planning board issue. It is a valid point, and it's something that planning board has to address in order to approve whatever they're doing. But I will also, two things, I would encourage you to pay attention because for when it comes to planning board and come and listen to the presentation and see what they're talking about. But also, I'm looking, these two gentlemen just behind you to the right, they are listening to everybody that's speaking, and they're making notes. So I suspect a lot of this will be addressed when they come to planning board. I would hope it would be.
What, say it is approved, does it mean that he will not ever extend his hours beyond 3?
That can be part of the approval.
For planning board?
Right.
In our case, what we're looking at is not a variance, which means they're in the right to build this. A variance would mean they're, they're imposing on one of our ordinances. They are not, which means they have every right to do this.
And they would have every right to go beyond 3 o'clock?
That's not something we're, yeah, potentially, yes. That's not something we're discussing here.
No, but we're bringing it up because you're saying, well, the saving grace is he's only going to be operating until 3, but that might not be the future.
Well, the, the purpose for the drive-through is because so much of his traffic is takeout. It's easier to alleviate the parking spaces and have the takeout folks come through the drive-through. Very similar to what press does up the street. And I will say though, pressed, I don't know who approved that drive-through, because that's kind of nutty when you try to get in and out of Target. But so I like the way this is designed, but at the same time, it's a valid point. But the purpose of the drive-through is not to, you know, turn into Dunkin' Donuts. It's to alleviate the, the parking slots that he's taking up for the other businesses in his area, which makes sense.
Right. But just as a, as a other note, it's not only a drive-through, it's also a restaurant that's going to double in size.
Correct.
Right.
So I'm not sure what the saving grace is for any of it actually, except that it's a wonderful opportunity for him, but not for us on Hilton Drive or any of that development.
I think that's a fair point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Katie Poirier, Levin Kimberly Drive, Merrimack. My parents live off Hilton Drive, so I live down over in Webster Green. I go to my parents' house two to three times a week. I drop my kid off 7:00 AM. I take a left, and I can do it. Getting out of there to go to Nashua to work? Crazy. So I echo her about two, three o'clock, but I'm also letting you know that in the mornings, there's difficulty as well. So I know it's a planning board thing, but I also wanted to bring that up and make that a motion or make a comment for that now.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone looking to speak in regards to this petition? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public. Invite you guys back up if you want to address any of the comments from tonight.
I'll just, just stay to the board, just so you guys know me quite a bit. I come here and yes, I've got notes on all this, and I'd be a moron if I didn't address this, if we got to the planning board level, so. And we will sit down and take a look at this, and we've heard everything that's been said, and would like to resolve that before we got to a planning board as possible, so.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any further comments from the board, or do I hear a motion?
Just make a comment. Sounds like the town needs to. Look at the traffic flow and the volume and consider maybe putting in a traffic light.
Or a turn lane.
Or a turn lane, yeah.
Just for what it's worth, that is, that area of D W Highway is controlled by the state of New Hampshire, so it's not a town issue.
Talk to your state reps.
Vote in your local election.
I'll make a motion that the board finds the petitioners' responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient. Proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioners' responses as the board's findings of fact. And further to grant that the special exception under section two, point oh two, point two, point C, point one. A of the zoning ordinance to permit a restaurant with a drive-through in the C one limited commercial district, subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall obtain site plan approval from the planning board for the proposal.
Second.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, four, one, zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Very welcome. As always, there is still a thirty-day window where somebody could appeal this decision, just an F Y I. Thank you very much. Best of luck. I'm gonna just take a brief recess. Lynn stepped out. Bring us down to four members. I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Okay. If need be, Chuck, can you vote in on this? All right, thank you. All right, the next petition, Nathan Stone, Amanda Martel, petitioner-owner. Variance under section three point oh five, the zoning ordinance to permit a building addition one point five feet from the side property line where a setback of fifteen feet is required. Parcel is located at thirty-eight Valley View Drive in the R one residential by soils and aquifer conservation districts, tax map five, C lot one seventy-eight, case Z B A twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six.
Hi, it's Andrea. It was supposed to get corrected on that.
I'm sorry?
It's Andrea, not Amanda. It was supposed to be get corrected.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right. She's coming right back too, but I'll start. Never done this before, so Nate Stone, Andrea Martel, thirty-eight Valley View Drive.
Okay.
Here in Merrimack, so we're looking to have a addition. Put to the left side, if you're facing to the residence, to the left side of the residence, and it would extend over the setback line. I don't know if you have the site or the plot plan, but as you can see, our house is right on the setback line right now, which poses a problem. And then to the right of the garage is all wetlands, so that also poses a problem going to that side.
Okay, so just to, just to clarify, you're, because I noticed that when I looked at the property, so you're right on the setback.
Yeah.
Where you are, okay. And, all right, that makes more sense, and you can't build to the other side of the house because of wetlands?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So. So I'm going to go over the variance criteria. Is that how it works now?
Absolutely, yeah, and just at the end of each one, please just, if you could pause so that we can ask questions if we have any.
Okay. Granted, the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the addition would still remain on our property and not go on to the butters. The addition would be tastefully done and not an eyesore to the neighbors. There would be no harm to the public interest.
All right, any questions? All right. Please continue.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because it is made to prevent possible overcrowding, but in this case, our residence is next to the corner lot. At eighteen Cortland, and if we were allowed to build, we'd still be about eighty-eight feet from their house.
Have you spoken to this abutter?
Yes, Chuck, he's, he's on board. He said pretty much, do what you gotta do.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Any, any questions from the board? All right, please continue.
Granted, the variance would do substantial justice because the variance would not diminish the value of the surrounding properties.
All right, and number four?
And so granting the variance would not diminish, diminish the values of the surrounding properties because in looking at the town assessor's site. Property values range from about three hundred and fifty thousand to almost seven hundred thousand in that neighborhood.
I, I hate to backtrack, but if you could, under number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice because. Could you please elaborate beyond just the diminishing of value of surrounding properties? Maybe talk about what this, this. Because I, I know that you've mentioned it elsewhere. If you could just tell us what this expansion means for you.
Oh, okay, well, that was, I haven't listened, but basically, we just purchased a home back in, in February, right? And we've combined both our families, Andrea and I, we have three kids. Right now, we're on the second floor, and we, three bedrooms on the second floor, and one bedroom on the first. What we like to do is, the master's on the second, we'd like to have the master go down to where the first floor bedroom is, that way, all three kids could be on the second floor together. We have one kid that doesn't, thought he was going to like sleeping on the first floor, but doesn't like sleeping on the first floor anymore. So we're kind of at that level, but it's also to, you know, give us a little bit more space ourselves, other than what we do have in the master.
Absolutely, very understandable. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, and then for unnecessary hardship. Which is five.
Okay, so the owing to the special conditions of the property that diminish it from other properties in the area, explain how the property. Cannot be reasonably used in strict performance with the ordinance, and the variance is therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the property. So we purchased this home back in February, as I just mentioned, as our forever home. We have three children combined and want this house to be the, the one they grow up in forever. Currently, two of the kids are on the second floor and the other on the first. Our hope is to extend the first floor bedroom to make it our master, allowing for more space for us, and then having all three kids on the second. We have explored other option, building options, like going to the, to the right of the house where the wetlands is, but that's not possible also. To keep us in the budget that we want, the going to the left of the house is the most reasonable. Allowing this would make our perfect home a dream come true and one we will call forever.
Now, in terms of, I was wondering if you could elaborate on the financial piece, did you, have you looked at maybe building behind the house?
We have, but the, because of the septic tank.
Oh, okay.
Septic tank behind that, and then we also looked at above the garage, but it would have to get all ripped down. Because. A, it's built on two-by-fours, and then the foundation, we have to fix as well, so it's cracked.
At least that's what the contractor said when he was providing his recommendations for us.
Okay.
And laying him out, that's what he had said to us when we looked at above the garage. That he would recommend doing all of those things, which would obviously increase the cost.
Oh, absolutely. So is this going to be on the other side of the garage?
Yeah, it's so.
No, so if you're, to the left, if you're looking at the, I don't know how you're holding up, so Valley View. Do you want me to just come up and point?
So you're looking at over here?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, the opposite side of the garage.
All right, now I understand, so the garage, all right.
I mean, this, this might not be a good aerial shot, but it, where you're, where you're proposing and where the line is. Looks like you're going to go over it, but like I said, it's probably not a good aerial shot.
Right, I, I mean, I have the, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, so I actually met with Mr. Stone yesterday to kind of talk about this, and after talking with him, reviewing the plot plan he's provided, and reviewing the G I S of which the aerial is based. I think what we may be seeing there is a graphical mismatch between the digital photography. In the, in the polygon placement of the homes and where the actual property line is. It seems things in that area kind of shifted in one direction. I don't think it's just that law that's affecting.
Okay. Thank you, Rob.
That's my question.
All right, in that case, any other questions from the board? All right, so. At this point in time, what I'll go ahead and do is open this to the public, see if anyone wants to speak about this. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this particular petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this particular petition? All right. So I'll go ahead and close the public.
Like to make a motion, so I'd lay, I make a motion that the board finds the petitioners' responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient. Proved each criteria is met, and the board adopts the petitioners' responses as the board's finding of fact, and further. To grant the variance under section three point zero five to permit a building addition one point five feet from the side property line. Whereas a setback of fifteen feet is required.
Second.
Further conditions.
You seconded it? All right, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. So the motion does pass, just as a heads up, there is a thirty-day window where somebody could appeal this decision. Few and far between, but you build at your own risk if you start building.
Okay.
Thirty days.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck. All right, and for John Flatley Company, petitioner. And John J. Flatley owner, variance under section seventeen point ten point three B of the zoning ordinance. To permit placement of a ground sign one foot from the property line where as a setback of twenty feet is required. Parcels located six eighty-five Daniel Webster Highway in the Iowa Industrial and Off for Conservation Districts, and will have protection area tax map six E, lot three dash four, case C B A twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Chad Brannon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. With me tonight from the John Flatley Company is Kevin Walker, and together we'll be presenting this. Variance application before the board this evening. The. Variance that we're requesting is under section seventeen point one zero three. Subsection B of the zoning ordinance to permit a sign to be installed less than twenty feet from the subject right-of-way. The site address for the property is six eighty-five Daniel Webster Highway. Tax map parcel is six E lot four. And the property consists of about forty-five point four acres of land. And has just shy of sixteen hundred feet of frontage along Daniel Webster Highway. The existing lot was, or has been approved for a light industrial flex space development, which is currently under construction. And so the property will be rented out to a number of. Tenants or various businesses and contractors, and a sign is an important aspect of this use, and. Through evaluating the property and, and taking a look at the best location for the sign. A modification is, has been proposed, which is, which is what brought, has brought us before you this evening. To locate that sign at the entrance, the main entrance to the site, which is kind of centrally located across from. The intersection at D W Highway, and then across from that intersection is, is also the Webster Green. On property right across the road from the, from, from this site. The. Previously proposed sign was situated on the west side of the site, which kind of favored the, the shared access with St. Cobain. And since, you know, the, the. Project has been phased, if you will, from, you know, if you're taking a look at the plan, basically from the west to the east. It's most appropriate for that sign to be positioned at what we would consider the main entrance, and so that's the primary revision that we have before you this evening. When you take a look at the property, and, and particularly the plan that I have on the board right now, you can see. That. The big right-of-way line that you go across the front of the property, right when you get to the, the entrance location, actually. Kind of jots in to the site twenty-five feet. When you contemplate that. Variable or that right-of-way modification when there was a land taken done by the Department of Transportation some time ago.
Sorry, if you don't mind speaking.
Yeah, no problems.
When you contemplate that and the, you know, the right-of-way configuration, the placement of the proposed sign is actually further. From the traveled way than the majority of the signs that you would, you would see along the D W Highway stretch. And a perfect example of that is if you take a look at the sign that's located on the, which would be the north side of the road for Webster Green, that sign does comply with your ordinance. It's about twenty-one feet off the right-of-way. It's twenty-nine feet from the traveled way, the white, the white fog line. Our sign would only be one feet, or a proposed sign would only be one foot off the right-of-way line, but it's actually forty-three feet from the traveled way. Because of that right-of-way jog and just the variable width of the right-of-way. So, and we'll touch on that with the criteria, but we really feel that although we're seeking relief. Anybody that travels this section of road is not going to think that that sign has obtained relief. They're going to think that it actually might be located fifteen or so feet further into the property than the majority of the signs. Along this stretch, because the right-of-way, as you can see, as you're heading west. Does, you know, come back down, it necks back down, and so properties gain, you know, twenty-five more feet where they can, they can position that sign. They could position that sign forward. Similar situation happens as you're coming, traveling east on Daniel Webster Highway. You can see that this twenty-five-foot jog kind of feathers back in, and then you get back to that normal right-of-way width. So this property is just kind of severely restricted in the one location where the entrance is. The entrance location was really a function of local site plan approval, but, but more so. The Department of Transportation and going through, you know, review process with them, and so that's why, you know, that entrance, you know, was, was proposed there. When we started considering, you know, this modification. It made the most sense to put the sign at the. it made the most sense to put the sign at the um main entry to the project. Most people, when they see a sign, that's when they actually contemplate, you know, um turning into a site. Often on the sign designs, I think you probably saw, you have the address of the facility and then you would list the, you know, the tenants that that are ultimately occupying the space. So it's it is a benefit and in kind of a focal point um so that people understand, you know, where they can access on that site. So that's another important reason why we're contemplating this this variance in our before you this evening.
So if the entrance is fifty feet down the road, we wouldn't be sitting here having this conversation? Is what you're saying? But I'm just trying to get an understanding.
Yeah, if the entrance was here, we wouldn't need.
Or if it was closer towards the main entrance there.
If it was over this way, correct.
Okay, so it's just because of the where they just happen to have it buckle in.
Right, they took property uh basically twenty-five feet along this section. There's an easement to DOT along the frontage of the property where they have the ability to function on, you know, on the property, but it wouldn't restrict us from putting a, you know, putting a sign. So that is really the hardship here is, and we'll touch on that, is is really the geometry and, you know, so the spirit and intent of the ordinance, I think, and we'll touch on that too if if, you know, the 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 thought process there, at least our understanding of it is, you know, you don't want signs to start to crowd a road, create, you know, visual obstructions and and really create a, you know, change a character of a, you know, a a stretch of road or highway. And that's simply not gonna happen with this proposal.
So what you're saying is that from the edge of the road to when the sign's gone, it's a forty-three, it's a forty-three foot setback?
Correct, the sign's forty-three feet off the traveled way, correct.
From the edge of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're put in our proposed location, correct.
All right. I go through there this afternoon and looked at it and um sight lines. There's a little bit of a rise there and if you're coming, depending upon the direction you're coming from, if it were back, you wouldn't see it until you're almost on top of it. So having it further closer, and it's not that close. But having it moved up a little bit means you can see it a little bit further, which means it gives you time to read the sign as opposed to going, what was that? So, I understand.
My my only question is, and maybe you don't have the answer to this, is why were those lines adjusted? Is there an intention to widen the highway, for example, to which this might wind up being one foot away from the road?
Um, that's a good question. I mean, the project as it stands now, you know, we've proposed this development. We're actually completing off-site improvements as a function of this project, um which which really consisted of contemplating a master plan development for this whole site. So we've gone through a pretty significant DOT permitting process that has contemplated, you know, um you you know, a lot of traffic improvements through the stretch. Um we do not anticipate the travel way ever being, you know, that far. Typically DOT tries to contemplate, you know, slopes, drainage, you know, a lot of other features that they want to have inside the right away. Um but to think that a, you know, a traveled way would would come that close to the right away line is is really not practical. And so I don't think that would ever happen.
Okay, Robert, do you happen to know why the lines adjusted there?
No, not at all. I we I've seen stuff like that before, but I I have no idea why the state has an extra piece there now.
Okay, I I was just curious, because I I would hope that there's a reason that the lines were adjusted like that. I'm just curious what they what would cause that. But that that makes sense why you're here for a variance done. All right. So if you want to go ahead and jump into the uh the uh the five points, and if you could just please pause at the end of each in case we have questions?
Absolutely, thank you. Um so taking a look at the five criteria, the first one is granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because um placement of this sign in the new uh location will allow approaching vehicles to more easily identify um the site. Um the entrance to the site, as I stated before, and the businesses within the site. Easier identification, uh whether it's an address or or a business itself will um have an added benefit and and increase vehicular and and potentially even pedestrian safety along um the corridor. We think it's just a it's a really appropriate um modification to locate that that sign at the entrance of the uh project. Due to the right away line, the proposed sign will be located at a similar distance away from um the traveled way as um other signs along Daniel Webster Highway. And despite being uh one foot away from the right away, the sign will not create any visual impact um issues. You know, and and will not, in our opinion, violate the spirit and intent of the ordinance, which we think really is to maintain, you know, those safety features and, you know, visual aesthetic along uh roadway. Certainly a sign that's you know, positioned, you know, well out in front of other signs would 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 look um you know, unsightly, and and that's not the case in in this uh proposal. In fact, if you compare the signage and the distance um from the highway, as I stated before, uh with the one directly across the road, the Webster Green um sign, our sign uh will be positioned um about fourteen feet further away from um the highway. So the design of the sign will not create any health or safety uh problems and will provide an easy easily identifiable sign for the tenants and the community. Um and for these reasons, we do not believe that uh granting the variance would be contrary to the uh public interest.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, please continue.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because uh we believe the spirit of the ordinance is to um minimize the visual obstructions of signs uh located too close to roadways and to maintain visual aesthetics of the town as well as maintaining safe site distance for exiting vehicles and just vehicle uh maneuvering in general. Due to the wider than typical right away along the frontage of this site specifically at the entrance where we're proposing the sign, um the proposed, or excuse me, this, the um proposed entrance and sign location, the one foot setback would still meet the spirit of the ordinance. The sign will be located um thirty-six feet from the edge of the Daniel Webster Highway, uh forty-three feet from the uh traveled way. Which would be um more than standard for a typical lot, as I explained, the dimensional distant difference between the sign, this sign and the sign across the road. Since this proposal will provide um these measures, it will result in no negative impacts to the public. Um and therefore, we believe that granting the variance would observe the spirit of the ordinance.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, please continue.
Um moving on, granting the variance would do substantial justice because um granting this variance would allow um the best for the best location of the sign in the most reasonable and visible location. The proposed sign will meet the design standards for signs including uh square footage, height and letter height. The Daniel Webster um right away is restrictive and unnecessarily requires any sign to be s- set um further back from the traveled way if strict conformance with the zoning ordinance is required. Um primarily, what I mean by that is because of the right away bumping in twenty-five feet, holding a twenty-foot setback would really position the sign too far away from the traveled road and it would be um would be really ineffective at that point. And I think that um one of the board members kind of shared that opinion. Granting this variance would do substantial justice because it would allow for the um productive use of the property and allow the property to um operate uh accordingly. In other words, a denial of this variance request would be an injustice to my client as there would be no apparent gain to the general public um by denying this application.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, so my only concern is that uh I I'd like to know why the right of way was adjusted for that section of property. That's, I I guess it's it's just a I I find it concerning that there would be an adjustment like that. Because what what's the purpose of the adjustment? And I think that we need that information. So without that, you know.
It may have something because if if they were doing this in order to save space for um expanding the road, widening it, they would have done it for a lot longer than just this one section. Um my guess, and I don't know, but it's it's just my guess, is because it's an industrial use, they thought that they wanted more space. Um possibly trailers, just, yeah, that type of thing. Um they just wanted more space for their um control. And I don't think it's anything unusual from when, if you looked at other places where they've got uh in um warehouse users that you'd find the same thing, that they'd have the same amount of space there. Right, just a guess on my part. But I don't think it has anything to do with widening the road because they would have done it for a lot longer than just this one section. It has to have something to do with the use of the section.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, maybe just elaborate on that. I I think your question is is a very good question. Um what I can tell you is we've gone through really extensive permitting with DOT and they they have not requested, you know, further widening, which would would kind of imply that there was a need, right? I mean, that hasn't been um something that's been discussed or required at all. Um but what I suggested before, I think, is really the primary reason, which is utilities and drainage. If you take a look at, um and this is an existing conditions plan of of this section of the road, and you can see um this is where the right away jots in twenty-five feet right there. Um if you take a look at this portion of the of the highway here, um you'll notice that there's catch basins positioned um closer to that right away line. It's a closed drainage system that runs along this um section. It ends here. Um but typically, if you're doing a wide, it it appears as though it was done for the drainage because the the right away line is positioned almost an equal distance on the backside of those catch basins. You know, so I would, you know, really speculate, I'm I'm kind of, I'm guessing, but it it seems like a pretty logical um guess when you start looking at the utilities that they probably just extended that um taking to what was likely a track line at one time that, you know, they accounted for the property. Um whether there was an ownership divide there or, you know, what the difference was. Um but this closed drainage system actually daylights out onto the property in this location here. You know, so they might have been anticipating, well, if we do one more catch basin and tie it back this way at some point, you know, it it it, you know, we we should be able to accommodate that. The reality is, is we take on that state drainage system and into our project as part of the design for this site. Um so we've worked hand in hand with DOT and, you know, certainly town um engineering and and DPW to, you know, go through a design that would accommodate not only the master plan development along this section of property that the John Flatley Company owns, but also you know, kind of ties together with those utility extensions. So um we do not, I mean, it's it's not possible for the state to expand the pavement to, you know, that right away line because they don't own the rest of you know, the property along here. So I think it had to be something to do with the utilities. And that's, you know, I think it was a, you know, a good question. It um Mr. Walker just said, I I think it might have been because of the drainage. And after looking at the existing conditions plan, I think I think he's right.
Yeah, just just to tack on a little bit, as part of the Chad mentioned a second ago, as part of our design for this entire site, we had to intercept uh where the state drainage was getting discharged and basically account for it with our drainage. Um so the drainage that was in that right away is still there. But instead of discharging onto our property, we we now collect it in a in a uh a uh drain man hole and control it from that point. And speaking with the 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 guy, his name was Brian Defossis at uh New Hampshire DOT, um we met out, we've met on the site for the past five years, if not more. He mentioned the same, that that there was a utility, it was a utility widening uh way back when, I'm not even sure when, might have been in the sixties, might have been the eighties. That was the purpose of it.
Okay, so they did confirm with you that it was for utilities?
Yes, yes. And and further, there's not gonna be any widening of DW Highway for our projects. Now, we are gonna be putting in turn lanes which are for this site, it's already approved by DOT. There's a site down by Gilbert Crossing. That's approved by DOT. We're working on one more uh area south of here. Um south of this location, um but there's no gonna, there's not gonna be any actual full widening of DW Highway.
Okay.
Add a turn lanes.
And that makes sense. Um that that does make sense because I understand that it would be consistent the rest of the DW Highway if it were a widening, just not knowing that or at least not knowing that up until this point uh just irks me because I want to make sure that there's no possibility that this is gonna wind up. I I know it would never be one foot away from a road because obviously you can't. But I want to make sure that we're not, you know, still encroaching within that twenty feet from the road. So that that is good to know. Thank you.
But we we actually asked DOT if we could actually put the sign across the right away line because it would still be further away than the sign across the street. And and they said, no, that's why we're here to do the one foot. Otherwise, we would have DOT approval for and okay to put it actually across the right away line and then come to you folks. But they said, no, let's just keep it out of the right away. So that's why we're here for what we're here for.
Okay, that makes sense. Uh any other questions from the board? All right, please continue.
Sure. Um the next criteria, uh Mr. Chairman, is the uh granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties um because and um our response to that was this existing site is located in the industrial district and is bordered by a mix of industrial and commercial properties along with a residential uh development to the northwest. The commercial industrial properties have similar signs to advertise their businesses. And therefore, uh the proposed sign for this project will match the visual appearance of the neighborhood and will not diminish um or cause a reason to diminish, you know, the value of of surrounding properties. Again, we're maintaining that corridor. In fact, the sign in its location that's proposed would be a little bit further removed from, you know, the highway. Additionally, the construction of the sign in this location will aid the businesses and the newly constructed uh flex buildings in order to help um them grow and thrive. And, you know, typically, new development, even if it's commercial and industrial in nature, has a positive impact on um surrounding properties. And we would consider this sign and, you know, kind of associated with that development and and we would, we would suggest that this this development will have a positive impact on, you know, um surrounding uh properties along this corridor.
Would you like me to move on, Mr. Chairman?
No, yes, please. Um moving on to number five, unnecessary hardship um owing to the special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Explain how no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. As I've stated before, this is a uh forty-five point four four acre property. Um it has a very irregular um geometry, which you can see on the plan, and part of that geometry unfortunately is irregular along the highway. Um so this property has, you know, has had some takings associated with it. Um and so the geometry of the site um creates a situation where unfortunately, in order for us to position a sign in in similar relationship to other uh properties along this highway, to the highway, um we we would have to seek a variance. And so the hardship really exists in the geometry of the site, the history of the site with the um the land taking um and um the proximity. And we don't think a fair and substantial relationship exists um to the to the general public purpose of the ordinance provision because we feel this proposal still meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance, still provides um a sign appropriately positioned away from the highway. In fact, to be located further away from other signs that are in close proximity. Um and and therefore, um there really wouldn't be a a a um substantial relationship be- between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that on this site. The um taking created a jog that uh makes the right away line approximately. The taking created a jog that makes the right of way line approximately 25 feet further into the site. And so that jog itself kind of creates that, you know, separation and that, that typical setback. Due to the taking, the right of way line now located where the sign would typically be allowed. You know, we believe that based on these conditions, that no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a, just a general, I guess, comment. So I'm, I'm generally in favor of, of what you're proposing of putting the sign here. I have concerns with the sign that I assume planning board will go over, mostly with the illumination. You know, because you do have residential across the street. I know in the planning board, we had, you know, as a former member, we had talked about it previously, but that'd be my main.
Before, just before we get on there, I believe that would reside on us.
The, the sign would not go to the plane where it's just a sign permit application. The sign design itself would comply with the town zoning ordinance.
So that's just my two cents. Just be, be careful about the illumination.
So we, we actually talked about that recently in the office. And the plan is to illuminate it, but we're, we're actually fine putting it on a dusted on timer. So it's, it shuts off at a dusk and turns on at dawn. So it's not lit overnight.
And I do think that the design does comply with the ordinance. It's just a, a function of location, is my understanding.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
So maybe this, this, maybe this question for community, uh, community development. So does this sign, since it's going to have the people that are going to be the stores that are going to be there? Does this sign count towards their total signage that they are allowed to put on the building as well?
It would. So if you have a ground sign, it does limit the amount of square footage you are allowed to have on the building.
Okay.
Each individual unit would be allowed to have one times the length or the width of their unit with having ground signage present instead of the normal two times that length.
Now, would it be the total ground sign or just the placard where their name was? Because my, by looking at the ground sign, it looks like it has multiple different, it's going to list multiple different tenants. So it's the entire ground sign or just the, like the little part that says, has their name?
It's the fact that the ground sign is, are you talking, are you asking what gets limited?
Yeah.
Yeah. So the, above the door, the, the wall sign, that size would be limited. So as of standard, if there was no ground sign at all, whatever width that unit is, say 20 feet, they'd be allowed a 40 foot squares, 40 square foot grounds, um, wall sign.
Oh, since there's a ground sign, they're going to be limited.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And just my personal opinion, for, for these tenants that would be listed on the sign, because you can see it from the road, I almost feel like if I was a tenant, I would want a larger sign on the building and less signage, you know, on the monument. That's just my personal take.
In the sign's construction, will any edge of the sign overlap the right of way?
No, no, it's one foot, closest point is one foot to the right of way.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on the board? All right, I will go ahead and open it to the public. Is there anyone that's looking to speak in favor of this petition? Oh. I don't see that being an issue. The, the only thing that I, I ask of everyone here is that conversation is explicitly between the board and. Right, no, I, I understand.
Just reminding. Just reminding.
Yeah.
That's conversation that.
Excuse me.
That's the conversation that should not be happening.
Right now at this moment.
It should not be happening. That should come to the mic and come to the board.
All right. So I'll do is I'll open this to any particular that's looking to speak against this petition. If one at a time, they could come to the microphone, identify their name and where they live, and please let us know what your thoughts are.
That's.
Chad, take the mic, please.
Do you mind if I answer that, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, go for it.
So the plan that shows the drainage in everything is, is, it's an existing conditions plan. It was part of the site plan package that we submitted to the town. But you can see here, the, all the drainage, the closed drainage along here, how it's positioned, you know, kind of equally along that right of way line. And then the closed drainage comes down in this location and then that right of way width kind of terminates there. There's also municipal water that comes through this section along the side of the road as well.
So I, I'm just trying to get a visual. So right here, what you're talking about is where the old fish hatchery is? And then this is your site and this is where we're talking about? Is that what you're?
No, this is, this is the entrance to Webster Green right here. So we're talking about, our sign is basically positioned, you know, roughly right here. This is the jog in the right of way. If, you know, if the entrance was over here, the sign would be able to be put, you know, up in the same exact location without a variance. I mean, we're talking about really 30 to 40 feet, but unfortunately, that's the difference between where the entrance is and not. But the fish pantry and, and stuff is over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think that this particular one actually demonstrates that pretty clearly. I don't know if you had that on. Oh, no, no, I was just saying that I think that this is more clear than that particular one it's showing. The, the, the distance, the, the 25 feet or so, that's.
And that's.
Where the right of way is adjusted.
And that's this one here. So you can see this is the proposed sign. I think what Mr. Chairman was suggesting is that this is where the jog of the right of way is. So you can see if that sign was over here, we wouldn't need the variance, but then it wouldn't be at the main entrance to the site.
Is there anyone looking to speak regarding this petition? Oh, please pass over the microphone.
So if that's the main in and out, how are we supposed to be getting out of that corner? You guys all just said about all the traffic we have. So now how are we supposed to be getting out with all that traffic coming in and out?
That's a good question.
Robert?
Name and address, please.
Oh, yeah.
Chloe Curran's of Webster Green, Shelburne Road, live right across the street, Webster Green.
So I'll be honest with you, since this is the, the, the project that they're working on is not what we're talking about. I'm not really sure how to answer that question. The only thing we're here to talk about is the placement of the sign.
Sign.
Yeah. So the traffic to the property has nothing to do with this petition.
But the sign is going to be in the same way as the property, the way we, you know, if they put a sign there, so that means we have to, you know, let mine.
But the sign doesn't block you from getting out of your.
No, but still, still not going to be in the right spot. The sign, the sign should be down where Go Bane is, like all the signs are. There's no other sign close to us. St. Cobain's is right there on the end where the lights are. Why can't the sign go there?
Because the entrance to this shopping area is, is not.
Yeah, but you're still going to go right by it. You're still going to go right either way. You're going to see a sign on the end. If you put it on the end, you're still going to see a sign. You see St. Cobain's, don't we?
That, that's true, but St. Cobain isn't a shopping center. And if you look at the other shopping centers in Merrimack.
St. Cobain's going out. So if you put a sign where St. Cobain is, you're still going to see no matter which way you're coming in.
If you put a sign down where St. Cobain's entrance is, that would imply that all of these businesses are at that entrance.
Right.
And they're not.
No, but you, so we have an entrance for all this, like, like most of the other malls, you know, you go different ways in. You know, there are outlets a way up there and it's not close to the entrance, is it? You can see that from the highway.
Right, because no, what's the difference is that if people who are looking to go to those stores, they pull into St. Cobain, they're going to end up in the factory parking lot. They're not going to end up in the parking lot of the store that they're looking to go to.
What are they going to do with that extra land? They own that extra land? No. So what are they going to?
That's not relevant, that's not relevant to where.
No, no, it's probably not. The sign could be there where it's going to be relevant out there. They build everything.
They're talking about putting the sign at that entrance, which they are entitled to do. All they are asking is to put it a little bit closer to the road.
Okay.
Actually, not even the road, the right of way. They're not looking to put it closer to the road.
It's still, it's still not going to help us none because we're not going to be able to get in and out.
It's not going to change you either way.
Anybody else want the mic?
Hi, Carl Rodriguez, 67 Shelburne. I live right across the street. My question is, they said that they're going to put dust to dawn lights, the timer on the lights. But why would you have the lights lit up during the day? On the sign?
They may not, but they are allowed to.
So if they're allowed to put the sign there, we're going to get this on paper that the lights will be shut off at night? So that it's not illuminated?
So although that's a discussion point, that is not really relevant to what we're looking at in terms of the petition itself. We're looking at its placement and location. The illumination has nothing to do with what we're looking at.
But they said that they would do that. So is there anywhere that's going to be written down that it will be done? Because they said it would be done.
My, my guess is in the meeting minutes and that's about it because that's not what we're here to discuss.
And they, and no, they don't have to put that down in writing.
Hi, Andrea Ireland. I'm also at Kimberly Drive in Webster Green. My question, and I, I know this has not been mentioned yet, is how big is the sign?
I actually have the proposed dimensions of the sign if you're, if you're interested in taking a look at it.
I would love to.
I believe it's 96.
96 square feet.
Okay, so you mentioned that this sign is going to be much closer to the road, obviously, and the.
No, not to the road, to the right of way.
Got it. Um, this is a large sign. They're mentioning Webster Green sign, which is, I don't know, maybe five, six feet. It's not that tall. This is a much taller sign that's going to be basically illuminating right into our entrance. And I understand it's not about the illumination. But here's my question, I guess, is this is such a large sign, this is going to be infringement on the rest of us who have houses that are right there and we're looking at them.
So I, I suppose my only response to that would be the sign's going to be roughly, what, 30 feet from the actual road? A little over 30? Okay. So if it's 43 feet from the road, how much further in would they need to put the sign for it not to be nuisance? And then would people who are trying to see where these businesses are located still be able to see it? Because 43 feet is a.
I mean, with a sign this big, I would think they would be able to see it.
The ambient, the ambient light that's going to come off of that building is going to be brighter than that sign.
Oh, I get that. Trust me.
So.
I've seen all the construction every single day. Trust me, I get it.
I know you do. But I mean, I, the illumination is, no, it, it's actually going to be 40 feet back. And I don't have, we don't have the specifics as to what, how far the light would shine over. But I mean, if it's 43 ba, feet, 43 feet back from the road and then you're talking the width of the road, and then you're talking where most of the houses in Webster Green are. You know, you're, you're talking probably a good, what, 100, 100 plus feet that you'd be away from that sign.
Well, but here's the thing, you've got all of us who were, originally, we were told that when this all went in, the trees were all going to stay. The roadway was going to be down by St. Cobain. All those trees are gone. The roadway is now across from us. It's impossible to get in and out of there at 7:30, 8 o'clock, when you're trying to get to work or between 4 and 6, when you're trying to go home.
I live on that road, I know.
Impossible. So having extra traffic going in and out of this business, which they're saying is going to light up the sign dust to dawn, which doesn't really make sense to me because if you've got a business who's open till 8, 9 o'clock at night, no one's going to be able to see this sign if it's not lit up at night. It's now 5:30 in the morning and it's dark. So are you going to tell me at 5:30 in the morning, that light's going to suddenly go on? You know what I mean? Like, that's the issue. We've got all this signage that's very tall, right across from our road, which wasn't even supposed to be there when this whole thing started. And now you've got more traffic coming in and out of that road because of the signage for these units. I've almost been hit by a dump truck trying to pull into my house because they were pulling into that road and came into my left-hand turning lane. So to be putting a signage and a roadway right across from a residential road where trucks are going to try and go in there now, they're going to end up hitting people. They're going to cause more accidents. Just having the sign there, it, it's just going to cause more trouble. Having the roadway there, it's going to cause more trouble. The road's already there. I know you guys can't do anything about it. But at this point in time, that's something to consider. I understand they want to do it one foot from the variance or right of way, but push it back.
So if they move the sign 30 feet south on DW Highway, they don't need a variance. So really, the distance from the road isn't the problem here. It sounds like the problem is that it's across the street from, from your residence.
The whole entrance is right across from the street. That's the issue too. I know that's not for here. I get that. But that's something to consider for the rest of us who do live in that residence and have been there for many years.
That was something that planning board would have, it should have been adjusted, planning board, if, or should have gone what it should have, should have, right? That, that being said.
And it did. And they say they went to DOT, so.
So I mean, I can go back and forth on it. The fact is, is that if you don't, if the, nobody knows where those tenants are, you're going to have more issues with people slamming on brakes, trying to do U-turns at St. Cobain or at the bowling alley, or even in Webster Green, if they end up missing the turn. So it's either identify it for drivers who are not familiar with the area so they know where they're going. Or potentially cause, and we can go on and on about the what ifs, but potentially cause accidents or turnarounds or inconvenience or people trying to do U's on Daniel Webster Highway. And, you know, and then, I mean, that, there's that type of a nightmare as well. And I agree with you, the traffic on that road is, is not good. But it by not, by not marking out where people are go, were going, or that people can see where they're going to go, you're going to potentially cause even more vehicular issues with people trying to pull into the shoulder and swing across the road or pull into Webster Green. Now, how many cars do you want going into Webster Green to do turnarounds and try to go across the street? I, I, I understand where you're coming from, but it's, it's, you know, the, the, the other side of it is that, you know, you're going to have, people are going to, you know, people not familiar with the area are going to end up causing issues with traffic and then make it even worse and exasperate it even more. But I do understand what you're saying.
But you've got a 96-foot sign. You think you can't see that as you're coming up over that little bit of a bump? You think you can't see that as you're coming up from Hot Rice?
I don't know. I haven't seen what the sign looks like when it's in place, so.
I mean, 96 feet.
96 square feet, yes. I would, one would assume that they would know where that is, yes.
139 inches tall. So I don't, that can't be right. Well, this is rectangular, so that can't be right either.
Okay, so.
Anyway, I, I just really don't think that having a sign that big, being that close to us, is necessary. That's just, it's just not necessary. Anyway, I, I just really don't think that having a sign that big, being that close to us, is necessary. That's just, it's just not necessary.
Okay.
There's plenty of room to see there.
Ashley Tenham, seventy-five Shelburne Road. So I have gone to many of the planning board meetings regarding Mr. Flatley and his land and all of that, and have dealt with Kevin and Chad here multiple times. My question is, is where was the originally, the sign originally going to be? Was it gonna be over by where St. Cobain was? Because this site actually has two entrances. We were told during one of the planning board meetings that the main entrance to this site was going to be using the St. Cobain driveway. And that this entrance was going to be for cars only that miss that entrance or that are coming up north from the south that can hit that entrance first. This entrance should not be having tractor trailers going through it, or large trucks or anything like that. That's what we were told to pacify us at a planning board meeting, and it didn't pacify us. We do not need a large sign right across the street from a residential area. You're talking about having people slamming on their brakes and turning into Webster Green. They're gonna do that if that sign is right there at the entrance. You need to give them a little bit of time to know that the storefronts are coming up, which is why it makes more sense not to have the sign right there, right across the street from us, where people are going to be slamming on their brakes, because they're afraid they're gonna miss that turn. And they're not gonna know about the second turn up by St. Cobain, where there is a second entrance to this site, that they aren't showing you because they haven't built those buildings yet. And that was supposed to be the main entrance, according to what they said in the planning board meeting that we attended. The other thing is, we have a school bus stop right there on Daniel Webster Highway. You are going to have people slamming on their brakes to take a look at that sign or be distracted looking at that sign right there at that entrance, where our kids get on our school bus and off that school bus. That is not safe. That sign should be in a different area. It's big enough. Trust me, they took down all of the trees. We brought that to the planning board, too. You can see that entire property coming north, going south. It's not a hidden area. That whole site is an eyesore, and that giant sign is going to be an eyesore. And how many times they say that it's not going to be a public issue, and it's not gonna be an eyesore? It is. And that's what we are all here trying to tell you. This is a safety hazard. We've got kids with a school bus, we've got our entrance there that we can't get in and out of. We already have people slamming on their brakes to see what's going in there. And then you're gonna try and tell us that they're gonna put this giant sign that's gonna cause even more issues, and even more of an eyesore. I don't agree.
All right, thank you.
Cassie Mello, sixty-one Shelburne Road. I also live in Webster Green. One of the questions I have is, you said shopping. What is considered shopping?
My understanding was this would be retail space, small shops, much like the first, no?
Because it, it does not look that. It looks like an industrial building that I worked in before.
Then it's a, that's a, you know what? That's a very valid question.
This is industrial use, it's not retail use whatsoever. It's an industrial flex space.
Okay.
So if they, and we can see the signs very well from where we are down the road. I've lived in this town my entire life. They cleared that and it was a big shock. So you can see everything, and these large vehicles that are going to be going in to either drop things off, pick things up, whatever it may be, that's, they're gonna see it. I don't see why we need this large sign that's not necessarily gonna impact shoppers, per se.
Fair question, yeah.
So that's one of my concerns, especially again, I've worked in an industrial area like this. They don't have any signs up like that. You just have the one above the building and the trucks just drive in and out. Also echoing everyone else has said, very concerned about our entrance. That sign's there, you got big tractor trailers coming in and out, someone's gonna get really hurt, and it's a big concern. So, thank you.
Katie Poirier, eleven Kimberly Drive. Just so you guys are aware, the latest traffic study that they did, dead set right into COVID. Awesome. So that really helped. Next week, they're gonna be going to the planning board, asking them to open up one of the buildings, and they haven't even started the other two. So this big sign that they wanna do is gonna have, what did I say, twenty-six slots on it? They only have ten. So again, Route Three is a main entrance from our town, in and out. You're gonna have this big sign, and there's only gonna be ten slots filled. Why have this sign when, again, they're echoing that, you have a big sign in front of each lot or each unit? That is plenty, especially with those trees gone, because you can see it as plain as day. Brian is no longer with DOT. He's moved on. Actually, speaking in the middle, I'm in the works, talking with Greg, who's now at DOT, and he actually just agreed with me two weeks ago. They're looking to put a do-not-block in front of our complex because we cannot get in and out. So take that into consideration with having a huge sign there, too. Thank you. Again, eighteen-wheelers, I've been with Ashley at these planning board meetings. They are supposed to be using the St. Cobain. They've had that agreement with them to have all of these industrial trucks, box trucks, using St. Cobain's entrance because it's a lighted sign. We don't need to advertise to use across the street. You know, I mean, we're trapped in our complex already every day. We can't, we don't need more, especially advertising that. It is not going to help us, and it's depreciating our value. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else that's looking to speak on this petition?
All right, well, before I close the public portion, I do have a couple of letters to read in. The first one is from Mark Catan on Pioneer Way. And his message is, just asked to have this note read in. To permit placement of a sign, a ground sign, one foot from the property line, whereas a setback of twenty feet is required. I walk through the area often heading south to go to the businesses' offices located along that area of Daniel Webster. Flatley is not only wanting to place a sign one foot from the property line, it is also going to be an extremely large sign. For those of us who walk along there and live in this area, this presents a safety hazard, as we won't be able to see oncoming cars or cars that may be turning. It also takes away from the rural nature of the portion of Daniel Webster Highway and would be an eyesore. Remember, there are a lot, there are lots of us who live in this immediate area. Yes, we share commercial businesses, but do we also have to put up with ugly, huge signs that are a safety risk? Please, I am asking for all of us who live and do business in the area, please do not vote and grant them this variance. There's a reason our town has this requirement in the first place. Flatley should have to follow the rules as well. The next one is from Joel Follier, eleven Kimberly Drive. And it just says, I'm writing this note in opposition to the application by Flatley Companies for a variance to place a ground sign one foot from the property line. Reasons I oppose this variance are as follows. One, a sign one foot from the property boundary presents safety concerns for motorists who may be passing on the right side of the lane. Two, there are safety concerns in regards to town employees keeping the roads passable and the snowbank slow enough not to present a hazard. Three, a lightened sign will present quality of life issues for the townhouse owners at Webster Green, whose units back up onto the DW Highway. They have already had to endure loud construction equipment in the early morning hours, along with having potentially contaminated dirt and dust fly into their homes and settle on their belongings. Many of these owners have small children. Four, despite all the talk to the contrary, in my opinion, the Flatley Companies have not been a good neighbor. They have presented traffic studies that are, in, again, in my opinion, are based off, upon off-hours usage. Five, the company has cut and removed trees from the property across the Webster Green. As far as I am informed, the company did not have town approval to remove these trees. I have yet to see the trees replaced with a similar type and size of tree product. Six, lastly, and I can't stress this enough, as a property owner and a taxpayer, it feels very much like the town offices and officers have already made their decisions regarding anything Flatley wants to do to these properties. Seven, appearances matter a lot. I'd like to see the town do what is in the interest of the taxpayers, especially the owners and taxpayers at Webster Green. For too long, our concerns on quality of life and general development of the Flatley Companies' properties have been ignored, avoided, or treated with disdain and derision. Please remember, appearances matter a lot, actions matter a lot, asking our town to do the right thing and deny the variance. So those are two of the butters that were not here this evening, so what I'll do now is I'll close the public portion and give you the opportunity to speak to all of the concerns that were addressed tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate that. I think it's important to point out that I, you know, a lot of the, especially from the letters and some of the feedback, I think there's a misunderstanding of where the sign's gonna be positioned as it relates to the highway. You know, I, I believe that a lot of people thought that one, a one-foot variance off the property line means that sign's gonna be a lot closer, you know, to the highway and, and it may create safety issues if that was the case. I, I would agree with all that. But the reality here is the sign, as we've stated, is gonna be about forty-three feet off the traveled way, very much internal to the site, much further setback than other signs in the area, and, you know, we, we've kind of touched on, on that. So certainly, the sign will not create any safety hazards, and, and we believe that the request is reasonable, meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance, as we've discussed before. The positioning is unfortunately just a, really a request because of the location of the right of way, due to the, what we believe to be the utilities, as we talked about. There's been a lot of talk about, you know, the cutting of vegetation. We've gone before the planning board. We've, we've obtained an approval on a site plan modification for a revegetation, vegetating plan. Planning board members actually requested that we, meaning the Flatley Company, you know, plant additional trees in, in excess of what was there or create, enlarge that massing. We've agreed to do that. That's part of the plan. The work just simply hasn't been done yet, but you can certainly see on that plan, which, which does demonstrate and, and shows the revegetation and the tree schedule and the layout that will be planted with this project. That also speaks to the importance of sign location. You can see with, you know, the trees, they kind of, if you will, kind of feather to the entrance. Well, the entrance is where we're looking to position the sign. That's where there's going to be an opening. It's, it's where vehicles that are leaving are gonna have the best visual sight distance. It's also where everybody's gonna have the best visual opportunity to view a sign. It's the right location for a sign because of that. You know, so I don't want, you know, this board to think that, you know, that hasn't been addressed. It has been addressed before the, the planning board, and there is a pretty significant revegetation plan attached to this project accordingly. The, you know, the traffic doesn't really relate to this application, but I will say that, you know, a significant traffic study has been submitted. It was reviewed by the town's consultant, also reviewed and approved by DOT. Certainly was not done in COVID. We went through a review with COVID, but there was, there was, that was accounted for and addressed, and third-party reviews were done. The site's approved, it's obviously under construction, and, I mean, there's certainly, you know, concerned neighbors, without a doubt, we've, you know, we have heard a lot of these concerns before other boards, and, you know, we're happy to answer questions, but we have addressed the regulations, and the site has been designed to meet the, you know, the local regulations and, and has gone through the appropriate review process. And so I don't, you know, although we're happy to answer questions relative to, you know, y- y- you know, some of those concerns, it's just, it's really not associated with the application before this board relative to, you know, the, the variance for sign positioning. We do not believe that the sign and its location is going to have an impact on the residents across the road. It's actually going to be positioned further back from the traveled way than a sign could be located in, you know, to the east or the west. And I think that this is where traffic activity is going to be. This is actually probably in location that provides the greatest distance to, you know, to some of those, those residents. There's, there's parking and, and access lighting around this sign. I mean, there, the, the, the sign is not going to be illuminating an area. And the sign design meets the town regulations, so there isn't an issue with the sign. We're talking about relief on the, for the positioning of the sign due to conditions in, in special conditions that exist with this property. But we're not looking to really put it any closer to an abutting property owner. We're looking to put it in the right spot, and that's why, you know, we're here asking for this variance.
I do have a couple of questions, though. One of the comments that was brought up is that there's an alternative entrance to this property that's closer to St. Cobain, is that correct?
There is another access to this property, correct?
Okay.
And I'd be happy to, to, to show you that if you would like. I don't.
Yeah.
You take a look at this plan, it's not an overall plan, but the entrance that we're talking about is, is in this location here, right on the, the left-hand side of the plan, or the, would be the west side of the plan. We have two additional buildings that, that will be constructed with this project, and there is a connection over here to the which would be the St. Cobain signal and, and location as well. What was, in the, the traffic study and the site design, took into account, you know, this kind of configuration. Fire department really wanted two ways in and out to this site, you know, so this configuration addresses not only traffic concerns, but also emergency response concerns as well. So, you know, we had two entrances in and out of the project. None of the entrances are restricted, meaning this isn't where all truck traffic has to go. This isn't where all truck traffic has to go. Certainly, you know, as our experiences as businesses occupy a site, their deliveries are generally our routine, and the drivers will decide how they want to enter the site. This is a signalized intersection here, so I would be willing to bet that somebody that wants to go you know, west on Daniel Webster Highway, you know, especially if they're in a truck or a box truck, you know, eventually they may come out here and exit and use that signal to, you know, to cross traffic. But it doesn't mean that people entering the site would not utilize this location. This location is center, kind of center mass on the site. So what does that mean? Well, you have a variety of tenants. I mean, you, there's such a variety of tenants that could be here. I mean, we could be talking about, just thinking about, you know, Flatley site in Nashua, they have, they have, you know, flooring company, they have tile company, they have you know, countertop company, they have, and what do all those companies have? Well, you can have, you know, an area out front where customers would come in, you know, select a product, purchase, you know, something. Where are they likely to come in? I would say they're likely to, you know, to enter the site in this location here. It might depend where they're coming from and what their familiarity is with, with the location. But this sign is designed to have a spot for these tenants, not just the first building, you know, that we've done, but all of them, and it's centrally, centrally located on the site. Certainly, people could come here, but this is where you're gonna see the site, where you're gonna see the buildings, and where you have the potential to, you know, to. And where you have the potential to, you know, to utilize what we would think, consider is the main entrance. And I think if you look at this whole layout, it's central, it's large, you know, you have in and out, we have, you know, off-site improvements accounting for. This is really the main focus point of this development. But certainly, I would say deliveries and such, larger vehicles, they probably are more likely to use, you know, this entrance.
So do you have a sign going up at that, at the other entrance?
We do not have a sign going up at this entrance, do not.
Okay, so I guess my only question is, if you only have one sign, it sounds to me like you're ultimately directing traffic away from a, an entrance that has.
I don't think so, I mean, because again, a truck driver knows where he's going.
Right.
A consumer doesn't, so you put the sign in the location for a consumer, a truck driver has a route. They do it every week or maybe every day or every, you know, month. So they know what route they want to take. We do want people, you know, consumers to, to come in this entrance. This is the entrance that will be the best access to two out of the three buildings.
Right.
So that's why we're asking for the sign to be there and we're only asking for relief on that dimension. Again, the sign can go anywhere, we meet the regulations as far as sign location, it's just distance to the right of way that we're talking about. We're not restricted to putting a sign, you know, necessarily on this side of the site. And we don't own this property either, so we can't put a sign at this entrance. It would have to be offset from the entrance. So the only place that we can put a sign at an entrance is here. This entrance, this whole area right here is owned by St. Cobain. And that's the St. Cobain sign right here.
All right. Any further questions from the board?
At the Planning Board, we did have a discussion about access. Fire Department wanted to, that seemed the most logical place to, to utilize the St. Cobain entrance with an access road from there. The access does not come from the highway to the site. You have to go through the St. Cobain property in order to do it, so it's not a main access. However, it is lighted and therefore, if I'm driving a truck and I, I've got a commercial license, so I could do that. If I'm coming from the south and I'm going to go into that property, I'm not going in that front entrance. I'm, small trucks, maybe. I'm going to go up to the St. Cobain where it's lighted. If I'm coming from the, the north, I'm going to come in the St. Cobain entrance where there's a lighted intersection and I'm not trying to cross traffic. If I'm coming from the south, I'm not going to go down to the entrance opposite Webster Green and hang out there in that horrendous traffic, because I know it's bad. And block traffic and wait until I can get a, enough space to bring a truck across the northbound lane into there. I'm not going to do it. And this is the discussion that we had at the Planning Board level, it's not limited to it, we weren't limiting it, but anybody in their right mind. And those truckers know what they're doing, they're going to the St. Cobain entrance. But if you're going and you're looking for, the examples you knew, the, the flooring story, if you're looking for the tile place. You're going to go in that main entrance, you're not going to go up to the, the St. Cobain entrance where you don't know that that, you don't know that you can get to this place from the St. Cobain lighted intersection. You're going to go to this primary intersection. Yeah, if you're coming from the north, you might miss the St. Cobain, you might go down there and, and then you're going to have the issue. But generally speaking, that's going to be your, your entrance where you see the places. This sign could go anywhere along that road. Be as far off the road as they're proposing putting it now. And the only issue is because that easement bumps up into their property by roughly 30 feet. They need the variance. If they move it down a little bit, it's behind the, the trees, you're not going to see it. This just, this is the place where that sign should go. And if DOT had not expanded that or widened that easement, which is the whole issue here. Then that sign would go there and we wouldn't be sitting here and none of the problems that Webster Green has. And, and yeah, you've got issues, there's no question. But we wouldn't be sitting here. That's the whole issue is because DOT expanded that just to give access to the, or access to the utilities. They bumped it out, that's why we're sitting here. The sign's going to go there somewhere along that street and that's where it makes the most sense.
All right. Yes, we, we have closed the public portion of this, just heads up. I, I'll be honest, I, I do, now that I see the full picture, have kind of an issue with this. And specifically because I'm looking at this sign thinking, okay, retail space, that makes sense. But if this is industrial, even if it's in the use of, uh, we'll, we'll go with hardwood flooring, for example, these aren't Honda Civics pulling in. And not to disrepute anybody, but I would absolutely personally have concerns with, you know, local contractors swinging in and out of an area that has no traffic light, that has kids getting on and off of a bus. I, I don't even think that it makes sense to put the sign there if it's closer to one of the three properties or it could be at the front. I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused here.
Uses that are allowed in the Siwan district.
Sure.
So it goes from everything from manufacturing to offices, to service and repair, watches, whatever it might be.
So have any tenants signed up to be in this location?
We have two people that are ready to sign on this. And I, I want to say one is another tile company. And the other, it's another small type of service industry, service type industry, forget exactly what it is at this point. This goes to contract, you know, cleaning areas, it goes to restaurants, banks, offices, daycares, breweries.
Right, but my question is really about who, who is, who's being slated to be put in there, not what is available to go into the commercial district.
We've got, we've got 50 or so units, so the reason we call this flex space is because all the units in each building, they're different sizes because the buildings are different. Say we have a 10,000 square foot building and we've got five 2,000 square foot pods. Somebody wants 2,000 square feet, we put a wall up 2,000 square feet. I'll give you an example from our Nashua site, we had a spyglass brewery. Take a whole building, the whole 10,500 square feet, we've got a brewery and a restaurant there. We've also got various other smaller, some guy took two spots, he's got 4,000 square feet. A convenience store is used that just for stock and, and not the convenience store itself. Another person is selling, like Chad said, tile, or somebody else selling a cup of paints or something along those lines. There are various uses that customers will come into the, to the site. This isn't strictly an industrial use, this is a flexible use, this is why we call it a flex site. And that's what's allowed here, there may be, there may be some retail use here. Depends on, depends on who, who comes in and signs a lease, you know, and that's why we have it as a flex use, somebody might want 2,000 square feet. Somebody might, might want six, somebody might want a whole building. We've got somebody that I can't get into much detail about, that is thinking of doing something that has a restaurant portion and a game option, think of like a, think of, you know, indoor, indoor sport type thing. That we're speaking with, you know, that will have obviously cars and customers and, and people coming in just off the street with their kids. And that type of thing, so there's multiple, but again, that's why we call it a flex site, you know. This isn't designed to be 100% industrial, it's not designed to be 100% retail, it's not designed to be 2,000 square feet. And it's not really designed to be 40,000 square feet, but if somebody wanted 40,000 square feet for something, here you go, we're not putting up any walls, take the whole 40,000.
And I think it's important to just point out too that it's, you know, the, the landowner should really be the one that evaluates. You know, certainly John Flatley Company has a lot of experience with consumers, with tenants, with, you know, what they're looking for. And this location for the sign is positioned in a location where the, where their tenants want, you know, the sign to be. And where he believes it's the best location, you know, for the site, for the consumers, for the people to see and relate to the site. It doesn't take away from the fact, I mean, the, the fact that there is a connection to a signalized intersection is a great option for the property. But it's not the right location to put your sign. I mean, that's, and there's nothing in the regulations that say, you know, the town gets to decide where the sign goes.
Right.
And so we're coming here saying, the sign's going around the main entrance, we just think it belongs in the boulevard. It belongs, you know, between the lanes, it belongs right at the focal point of the property. So that we can leave all the landscaping that was previously approved by the Planning Board exactly as designed.
And it's a safer location, again, you slide it 20 feet back, people are, you know, crane necking themselves and trying to find a sign. We, we don't have an actual place for a sign at the St. Cobain entrance. We don't have, if we owned that road, well, okay, now we have a different story. You know, we could put a sign there, but we don't own that. So we, we can't put a sign at that entrance. And that's, that's, aside from that, you know, aside from it, this really being a central portion of it, I mean, that's just a fact, we don't own that portion of the property. And in reality, we're not asking for, we're asking for variance to get close to a line that you can't see on the ground.
Right.
The pavement is in the same place, everything's in the same place. It just so happens that a line on a piece of paper got bumped out by DOT when they put, wanted to put this drainage in. And, and that's really what it is, thank you.
Understood, yeah, because you could move the sign, like I said, 30 feet to the southwest and it would, it would be in.
And as far as contractors coming in, if you have a contractor coming in looking at flooring or tiling or that kind of thing, they're not coming in in a big truck.
Some of them are.
I don't think many of them are.
Pick up some.
Right. Regular vehicles, they're not coming in in big, big box trucks.
True, true, all right. Any further questions from the board? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, provided each criterion is met. And the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact and further to grant the variance under section 17 dot 10 dot 3B of the zoning ordinance to permit placement of a ground sign one foot from the front property line, whereas a setback of 20 feet is required, subject to the following condition. The applicant shall obtain a sign permit for the proposed ground sign.
All right, motion by Brian, seconded by Lynn, all in favor? All opposed? All right, so 3-2, the petition carries forward, but you do have 30 days for someone to appeal this. So if you move forward on this within the next 30 days, you do so at your own risk.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we have a discussion of other agenda items or other things to, anything?
I think I sent out an email to the board as well as the Planning Board, the state is doing some, I think municipal association is doing some training for new members. Of course, existing members can make, might benefit from it as well, but relative to zoning and planning that it's an easy thing to pop on and, and do it and it might be helpful. So just, it's, it's there, people want to take advantage of it.
Coffee, because I know you said you were sending that out, I'll have to go through my email.
Okay. I can resend it if people want, but.
Oh, I'm, I'm sure you sent it, Mike.
Okay.
But I'll ask if I don't see.
But it, it would be worthwhile.
Yeah, it's actually something I think I want to take a look at just out of curiosity.
Same thing here.
I used to do those OEP meetings.
Yep.
And then I realized that they're just far too lengthy to, to sit through.
Municipal Association usually does them in a, in a reasonable time and, and they do a good job with it, so.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes for Wednesday, July 26th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, 5-0-0.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.